Meeting is now called to order. Any items from the public? Records show there's nobody here from the public. Need approval of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. President?
Been properly moved.
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? The only thing that's valid to discuss, we may, uh, we may move a couple around our, um, our three forty-five, maybe moved up to, uh, around three o'clock to accommodate the time for that one. Other than that, there should be no other changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next up is Larry Hess, our assessor, and this will be session number six for our review and equalization. Good afternoon, sir.
How you doing?
Good.
We got, um, we got a couple of changes we need to make. Uh, just one, I think, just one change for tax class. We do have a three o'clock appointment that came in over the weekend, and so John's taking care of that. But, uh, other than that, that's all we have right now. Uh, I did get, I want to mention, I got an email from Mr. Copeman Hever asking me, we had finished up, you all have talked with him, and I emailed him back and I copied you guys on it. But he was just questioning whether we got his area put in class two for next year. And I told him we did, and we exonerated that garage area for twenty twenty-five. So, or twenty twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one, those four years. That'll be presented to you Thursday. But other than that, we can get, uh, have this one change presented to you, and then we'll see you back here at three o'clock.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
How you doing?
Good, Cody. How you today?
Good. So I just got one change, just a class change. Uh, it's for parcel one or District One, Map eleven M, parcel sixty, owned by Davy, uh, David and Tamara Addy. Um, it's just a class change, no change in assessment, just going down from a class three to a class two.
Yeah, it was District One, parcel sixty.
Map eleven M.
Eleven M.
Yep.
Motion to approve the classification change.
And that's for District One, Map eleven M, parcel sixty.
I'm stuck at that motion.
Then properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's happened. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Next up is Honorable Sheriff, Rob Blair. Do your budget presentation. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. I want to thank you all for, um, the past year that I've been in this position. It's the first meeting I've been Commissioner already, but, uh, I just want to reiterate how appreciative I am that how you've worked with me over a, uh, I guess you would call it an unusual year. Uh, came in as an appointment and, uh, recently elected, and I'm serving as elected sheriff, and honored to be here. But I just want to thank Gary and his staff and, um, anything we've asked for within reason. Uh, we probably asked for some things, maybe not as within reason. Gary might roll his eyes at us, but, uh, we try everything we do. Uh, the sheriff's officer trying to do it for the betterment of the community. And, uh, these asks that we have in this year's budget, um, some may seem large, but, uh, we're looking into the future. I know you all are too with some of the things you're trying to do as far as revenue and stuff to fund some of these things. And I, I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate, um, how you've treated me and, and our, our agency over this past year. Um, and I can't, during this prayer, it made me think about, um, last week's incident that we had, uh, with our deputies. We had three deputies and three troopers involved in something that no police officer wants to go through. Um, it's, um, it's tragic for the, for the individual that was shot. Uh, but it's also a reminder that our officers go through a lot. Uh, it's, if I could take one incident and justify all the things we're asking for, it would be that one. We were called to a situation that average person probably wouldn't run into, but they all willingly done, did what they had to do. And, um, I came out and met with them early that morning, the three officers involved, and reassured them that we would provide them with whatever they needed, um, to get through this. Because a lot of people, regardless of what Facebook sometimes says, um, doesn't understand what a police officer goes through. And that incident in and of itself probably, uh, would, would be one that I could use to say, everything we're asking for is justified, and I understand budgets and, and, um, it may seem like we're asking for a lot. But, uh, again, uh, I just can't reiterate enough what our officers go through in that incident of itself. I appreciate your all's support, appreciate your call, um, Mr. President. Try to keep you all aware of what's going on and along with the, the public, and I appreciate you reaching out to me. Really, and that, uh, your thoughts for our officers. I thought I would just go over a few things this past year, some of the things that, uh, it was, like I said, a challenging but successful year. Uh, we started off, um, one of the things we wanted to do is get new weapons. I have one of those new weapons now. Uh, I was one of the last ones to receive it. All of our officers were trained with this weapon. It has a new sight system, red dot sight, a new lighting system, and all this was obtained through a private grant that, uh, we were fortunate enough to, um, meet up with an individual that I have a good relationship with, and, and it was, it was paid for. No, no charge to the taxpayers at over eighty-seven thousand dollars. Um, we created a new multi-agency. Um, I like to call it a task force crime scene with all agencies in the surrounding counties that we used, um, uh, right off the bat with the, the lady that was burned on Golf Course Road. That came in handy. That crime scene team came out and responded, and, uh, we'll utilize that in the future. We continue to train in that area. Um, we created an EPA employee appraisal system to better assist in recognizing the excellent work and the substandard work sometimes. The EPA is designed to help us rate our deputies and their work, and that's something that we created early on to help us, uh, find out who's exceeding and who's, who needs a little coaching. Because every now and then we have to coach some of these, uh, some of the guys up, guys and girls, uh, I should say. Um, but, uh, we, we did that. A chain of command notification system, which I hope you all have noticed that we, we try to keep the public informed of what we do, um, through press releases and whatnot. And that's one way that I can be made aware of when something major happens, that we get notified right away, that plus we can notify you all. Um, through the hard work of Chief Burnett, we started a contract system with the, uh, the deputies to allow them to work off duty, um, making contract pay, uh, which puts them out in the public more visible. It helps them also, um, get some extra money in their pocket in these trying, uh, economic times. So that's something we, we, uh, started. Um, we got an increase of twenty thousand dollars from the governor's highway safety for extra patrols, B, DUI and seat belt enforcement. Sixty thousand for grant checkpoints, that's from commissioning, uh, drunk driving, and that's pending your all's approval. I believe Chief Burnett goes before you all on Thursday on the sixty thousand dollar grant through the commission on drunk driving, and that, that would be, uh, we could set up some DUI checkpoints in the area. And last but not least, uh, been working with the, the school system on, um, um, a bill that will get an SSO in every school in Berkeley County. Um, and I hope that reaching out to, uh, you all can reach out to our, our local delegates and, and delegates throughout the state to support this bill. Uh, I don't have the bill number before me, but it will be presented, and, um, I, I don't have the funding or the resources with civil service to hire enough deputies to put in all the schools. So, um, this would be a program that the schools would actually hire, um, retired officers and, um, to get into the schools and work with us for school safety. So these are just some of the things last year that we, I could go on and on about the accomplishments we had. And like I said, it was a trying year, but it's a very successful year. Um, as I go through this, if you have any questions, please ask. I brought, uh, plenty of intelligent people here to answer your questions. Uh, if I can't answer it, uh, so.
I do got one question on that.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the bill that you're speaking of, will that supply all the schools, or we continue to supply the ones we've been supplying now, where that free up officers for you to get back and fill the schools?
That's a good question. Um, I think we'll, we will continue with the, the three officers that we have in the three high schools. Of course, Martinsburg Police Department has one at Martinsburg High. Uh, these would be, um, uh, middle school down to elementary, and also include private schools. This is, this bill is designed for any school that wants to have a SSO, and I believe every school should have one. Uh, it's designed to accommodate that, and, and I guess, um, it'll be up to the, uh, legislature to find the revenue streams to, to fund all those. Um, I think right now, Dino Lacks people are funded through Apple. But yeah, it's, it's a way to get someone, that first line of defense, into the schools, um, quicker than we could ever. Uh, I just, I don't see us being able to hire that many deputies to get into the schools.
Jeff, if you could get us that information, we're going to Charleston, uh, this week. If you could get us that information, that way we could support it. You know, we, we've all been collectively working on, you know, the one cent sales tax to be able to assist the school system.
Yes.
Through your agency with that. But, I mean, honestly, I don't really care how we get there, uh, as long as we can get protection in the schools.
A summer Barrett, um, sent me a, um, a draft bill. I don't think it's been presented, but now, before I leave here, remind me, and I'll, I'll, I'll give that to you so you know what you're asking about. I'll start out with, uh, Budget four oh four, the sheriff's tax office. Um, this, this is the easy one. It's because it's budget neutral. Um, we're asking for ten thousand, um, increase on line one oh eight for overtime. Um, increase that from three thousand one forty-five to thirteen thousand one forty-five. And this is going to be used for processing the mail payments, DMV registrations, and training for new processes. As you were aware, we've done some restructuring with, uh, Lieutenant Christian's help. And, uh, with that restructuring is going to require some, uh, some new training and, and hiring and whatnot. And it's, um, we're anticipating an increase there for overtime to make sure we get people trained up correctly and, and get these new processes going in the way the tax office should be run. And, uh, that would, that would go a long way towards helping us. And we would take that from Budget four oh nine, the tax processing, um, uh, cutting line two twenty, advertising, legal publication line, down, uh, ten thousand dollars to one hundred thirty-six thousand. Like I said, this, this request would keep that, keep that, uh, budget neutral. Any questions about that? Uh, I have a note on here, and this isn't in our budget, but, um, with the fluid situation at the tax office, I'm probably going to be asking for a part-time position, um, to, uh, to help out in some areas that we're gonna, we're gonna have to address. Uh, but that's something I can discuss at a later date. Budget seven oh one for civilian and service, uh, process. Uh, this is a two-position, uh, request. It comes at a, a cost of one hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-four fifty-six. That's with benefits. The request is for, um, our current police social worker. Um, her name is Alexis Worley. I don't know if you've had a chance to meet Alexis, but Alexis is doing a tremendous job for us. She, uh, is currently funded through September twenty twenty-five through the grant that we had applied for. And, uh, that grant, uh, ends, uh, on September twenty twenty-five. We're working on getting that continued out. But should it not, uh, continue out, we would need that position filled, um, definitely. But we'd also like to add another, uh, police social worker, uh, with Alexis. The Martinsburg Police Department currently has three, uh, police social workers, and they do work with Alexis. But we, um, we see a great need for this, and I will, I will go back to, uh, what I spoke about at the beginning. Uh, that incident, um, affected an entire shift, and Alexis was, she beat me to the office. She was there with the officers, uh, doing what she does, uh, what I'm not capable of doing. She's very good at what she does. And, uh, a couple of weeks prior to that, the state police had a tragic incident out at, uh, the state police barracks where a murder-suicide happened. And, uh, when I got the call on that, I immediately, uh, asked if Alexis was available. And I believe Captain Heckman called her out to that scene, um, to just help that little ten-year-old girl. I'm sure you're all aware of that situation. Alexis not only helps our deputies, but she's also available. She'd be available to anyone in this room. Um, in a critical incident-type situation, she's just, um, that's what she does. So that's how critically important these police social workers are. Uh, that was one of my first hires when I was appointed, uh, last year was Alexis. And I couldn't be more pleased with the, uh, the amount of work she's, she's handling, but also, um, how she handles it. If you haven't met Alexis, you should make an, uh, effort to, to meet her. She's a wonderful young lady. And I think adding to that team with the growth we're anticipating here in Berkeley County is, is a, um, is an urgent need. Any questions about that one? Um, Budget seven oh eight, reserves and special deputies, uh, we're not requesting any additional funds at seven oh eight. Seven sixteen for animal control. We are requesting a thirty thousand eighty-one dollar increase. This is, um, related to a pay scale that Marcia helped me, uh, or she actually, she didn't help me, she did it. Came up with a pay scale which is comparable to what the, uh, what our court marshals have right now. The entry wage, uh, would be adjusted from thirty-six thousand six fifteen to thirty-nine thousand seventeen, which is an increase of two thousand four hundred and two dollars. Not seeking any new positions. However, I was, uh, told today that, um, we're losing an officer. He's, he's moving to another agency for better pay, and, uh, which I can't fault him, and he's always wanted to get into actual law enforcement. So we'll be replacing that, and we're not asking for any new positions. The total ask for this is thirty thousand eighty-one dollars. The work that the animal control officers perform on a daily basis comes with many of the same risks that our law enforcement deputies, uh, encounter. Uh, just last year, one of our officers was, uh, had to use deadly force on a, on a dog. Um, and her actions, I was able to view that video and the investigation, and she, she performed very, in a professional manner. Uh, I know she saved another dog's life, but she very likely saved, uh, uh, the owner's, uh, life or at least serious injury, because that dog was, was very vicious, and, and, uh, those are the kind of the things that they, they face. So I think asking to, to increase their base pay, it's not that, that much of an ask. I think it's, uh, very important that, uh, we, uh, we do that for them. We can fund that. Um, under the operating, uh, and, and animal control, we're asking for a fifty-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollar increase. And this is, uh, due in part to the conversations we've had about, um, a new facility for animal control. Their current facility is outdated and not big enough for the current, uh, uh, I guess, housing of, of dogs that they have. They stay, uh, they stay at capacity or, or over all the time. And in talking with, uh, Gary and, and some of the, uh, individuals and his staff, uh, we think we could, uh, uh, take from the, um, the kennel fund and, and put a new building. We looked at where the current facility is and, uh, get that up and running in, in the very near future. And with that, uh, we would have to ask for an increase in our budget for operating funds, and, and that's, uh, line two twelve printing from zero to five hundred. Two two three, professional service from two thousand to thirty-three thousand. Two thirty, uh, contracted service from zero to five hundred. Three forty-one, supplies and materials from thirty-six eighty to twenty thousand. And three forty-five uniforms from two thousand to five thousand. We were, uh, using funds out of the dog and kennel to, to fund those, but if we do this building, we're just requesting these, these funds to replace that. Now to the, the largest part of, uh, the budget, the Budget seven hundred, law enforcement. Uh, I have a note here. Marcia asked me to advise, last year we did not have the longevity added to our budget, forty thousand six thirty. This is a locked sale, but we needed to have that added, uh, to our funding. According to West Virginia Code, it's a longevity that, that we need, uh, for each officer as they, um, gain time within the agency.
Just for the record, Commissioner, that was my type of mistake resolved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Payroll. Um, this request, um, we submitted for five additional deputy positions. We're currently funded for sixty-eight. This would put us at seventy-three. We're not up to, uh, our max right now. We, we are anticipating that hiring at least one, um, here very soon. Um, maybe two, depending on, I think we, we have two still in the, so, you know, if history is, is right, we'll hopefully hire one out of that, but, uh, if we can hire two, we'll hire two. And then we're going into another hiring, uh, process. process. Ends, the deadline ends in February and then tested us in March. So we hope to get up soon to our allotment 68. And that's why we're asking for the five additional positions, which would come at a cost of 300,000, 376,994 and 35 cents. We're looking at the growth, as you all well know, of the county combined with additional demands and needs of our citizens. This is a step towards a projection that the department previously discussed. Our long-term, this is out several years from now, would be 148 deputies for Berkeley County, given the growth that we're having, anticipating. And the FBI ratio officer per citizen, we're way behind on that. I don't have the exact number with me, but I know we're way behind on that. So in order to, to get up to what is recommended, we would need in the distant future, not the next couple of years, but 148 deputies. This would be a step towards that. Staffing issues continue countywide with our office, the Martinsburg PD and the West Virginia State Police, which increases our call volume. The West Virginia State Police, not only now, but in recent years, has really been cut back from where they were even from 2013 as a gauge I use because that's when I left the state police. They had 35 troopers over there. They may have 15 now. I know they got some here recently, but that's, that's unacceptable. But then again, we have to take up the slack when, when they reduce in manpower. We also requested in payroll, $5,000 pay scale adjustment for 68 current deputies and the five requested, which is 73. And that would come at a cost of 365,000. This would tremendously help in our recruit, recruitment and retention and helps, helps us in line with the starting wages of other agencies. And I wonder if I brought that with me. I'll, I'll give you a copy of this. Chief Young researched some of the surrounding counties and local PDs at where they're starting at and made up a chart. I'll give.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. As you can see, most if not all are above us now in their uncertified starting wage and then their, their certified starting wage. And then there's an advanced hiring that he put over here. And remind me what that?
The advanced hiring?
The advanced hiring, what?
Over here.
Okay. That is, that advanced hiring section is when officers are allowed to bring their time for other agencies. That's where they would start at there. And I would note on the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, they're, they're, they're just behind us on, on the starting pay. But I was informed that they're going for a significant pay raise this time too, whether they get it or not. I'm not sure. But by and large, we're, we're behind the eight ball in, in most of these. And in order to hire the best, we're going to have to, to be up in front with pay. And that's what most young people are looking for. What are you offering in pay? And that, that's why we're asking for the, the 5,000 across the board pay in that area. Frederick County, I was shocked that Frederick County started at 49,510. But I'm also told that they, they rapidly increase once they're hired that they, they shoot up fairly quickly in the, in the pay. So that's just something to consider for that part of our ask on the 5,000 across the board raise for our deputies. Right now, we currently have five people already at their 20-year mark and seven more by the end of 2026. So we're looking at losing a significant part of our top-end staff. I know we're likely to lose one with 20-plus years here very soon. So I think given, given that across the board raise may, may help keep people a little longer. And I hope it does because we have some really talented individuals with, with enough time to leave our agency. And it's always nice to have individuals that have had the experience to pass that down the line to the, to the younger deputies. So move on to the operating code. Unless somebody has any questions. I'll move on to operating. We, we're requesting a 500,000, 542,100 dollar increase. The first increase is the line two 14 travel from 16,000 to 32,000. This increase is due in large part to our request for training. We have a, we have a significant request for training because we have some fairly young individuals and, and even the older individuals benefit from the training that we're requesting. So that travel goes, goes hand in hand with the, the training request. Line two 16 maintenance and repair from 79,000 to 139,500 is a 60,500 dollar increase. This, this request is related to our current subscriptions that we have. And those would be things like Leeds Online, Sell Bright, Idemia, All Traffic Solution, CATS, K9, the renewal increase from Axon Taser contract from 42,000 to 68,000. And our gray key renewal, which is 42,000. The gray key is only renewed every three years. So that's something we haven't had the past couple of years. And all these, all these subscriptions are beneficial to our investigators, our patrol officers when they're investigating crimes. And I'll give you an example. The Leeds Online, just this morning Sergeant Anaya told me that one of his deputies, I believe he said Meeks, was away at training. And, and this is, this is a testament to Meeks. He, we, we had a, a call put out about an individual that's committing a lot of shopliftings. He's like a serial shoplifter in the area, stealing tags off cars and whatnot. And Meeks took it upon himself while he's away at training to take some of the information that was put out and put into this lead system and immediately got a hit. And I believe Sergeant Anaya told me that through his just taking it upon himself to do this, is probably going to clear at least 14 felonies, not So it's the whole surrounding areas. Having access to that system is, is critical to our officers and, and doing their job. And it helps, you know, when you also have motivated officers like Meeks to take it upon himself to just, you know, take a shot. And, and it worked out. And that, that system was very beneficial in that instance. So that's, that's the justification for that $60,500 increase. If you go to line two 18 postage, I think that probably speaks for itself with the amount of activity and things that we have to mail out, evidence and whatnot. And we've requested a $1,000 increase there. Line two 20 advertisement and legal publications from 7,000 to 20,000. That's a $13,000 increase. This is intended to help bolster our efforts and, and recruitment. We're trying to figure out ways, again, I'll go back to pay. That'll, that'll help in recruitment too. But we're trying to figure out innovative ways to, to recruit better. And some of the other agencies have had some success in putting billboards up in strategic areas. And that's something we'd, we'd like to do with that increase. But I'd also like to note at this point, County Clerk Tony Petrusi and, and his assistant John Alderson have been very helpful to us in, in getting the word out for our hiring process. As you well know, that we don't do the hiring. It goes through the civil service, which is kinda, you know, you got hoops to jump through and stuff. But they've been more than, more than helpful to us. And it's been great working with them in, in this effort to try to professionalize how we're doing this and getting more people. I'm not sure where we're at. The closing date's coming up, Thursday is in for, and I'm not sure how many applications we have, but they've worked really hard in helping us in that area. And I'm, I'm very appreciative of Line two 21 training and education from 60,000 to 116,900. That's a $60,300 increase. Ever, ever double what we had. Some of the training that we're looking for, I really want to see more leadership training in our, our agency. You can always use good leadership training. And we were looking at training through the FBI. It's called LEED. It's Law Enforcement Executive Development. And it's a three-tiered leadership training. It's supervisory, command, and executive. We would like to be able to host that at our, our facility because they do them all over the country. But we have a great training facility. And I thank, again, Gary and the, and the maintenance staff, they recently came in and repainted it. And we have some new furniture over there. It's, it's a very nice training facility. We'd like to utilize that in the future for stuff like this. Because all, all of us need good leadership training. And I think this, this would be a good, good opportunity to get the, the deputies and it would not only just help them, but to help them professionally and promotions and stuff in the future with our vision of, of growing the agency. We want good leaders. We want solid leaders. And that's a good way to get it through the FBI. Part of the other training would be dive team certification. We can do that in-house with the current dive mastery that we have. That would, that would incur no travel cost. But the, the cost of the training would be part of what we're requesting in this. Driver training, EVOC and PIT, we need good driver training. Majority of the patrol is about driving. They're going prime call, two calls. So they need to be trained up really well in accident avoidance and, and how to operate an emergency vehicle appropriately. And the PIT maneuver, we want to make sure that they're well-trained in that to, to end some of these potentially deadly pursuits that we have out here. So that's, that's part of the training. Close quarter battle, I think that speaks for itself. The sniper level one training, this is training for new snipers. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to call snipers out to situations and we want them to be the best trained that we have. And then there's a practical firearm training that all law enforcement needs good training, just in the day-to-day firearms training. And again, I'll, I'll reiterate what I said before. We currently have five, look, there are 20 already, and seven more by the end of 2026. We're looking at, we're looking at losing a significant amount of experience at the Berkeley County Sheriff's Office and training the ones, training the ones coming up is, is very important that, that we, we give you the good training. Request increase two two three, the professional service from 25,000 to 58,000. That's a $23,000 increase request. This line is used for the hiring process. We anticipate hiring a lot of people in the future. And, and the hiring process for a deputy sheriff is a lot more detailed than just most, most jobs. We have to have physicals, psychologicals, polygraph. And, and then after that, when they're, get promoted, they have what's called a promotional and all that comes with a cost. Our canine dental and vet bills, including emergency visits, which is a 10,000 in this request, and critical instances in trauma and counseling is another 10,000 of the 23,000. Captain Heckman can speak to that because he, he heads up our CIT and Critical Incident Training and, and oversees that part. And he's very passionate about that. So the training in these areas are very critical to our agency. Line two 29 court costs and damages. We're asking from a 6,000 to a 10,000 dollar increase. That's a $4,000 bump. Of course, when I was appointed back last January, I walked into several ongoing lawsuits. And I believe we have like used up to 20,000 to date on that. And we're, we're hoping that this amount, up to 10,000, we, we won't have to use that in the future. We try to mitigate not have as many lawsuits. You can't always anticipate when someone decides to sue you. But that's what that ask is for. Line three forty one supplies and materials from 246,000 to 542,300. That's over double, 296,300 request. And a large part of that is for a rifle upgrade, which is 100,000. Our current rifles are between 10 and 12 years old, which according to our firearms people, you're getting at a point to where you start having some malfunctions and what Again, I'll go back to last week's shooting. Rifles were used in, in that shooting. Due to the nature of the call, the individual was reported to have a rifle. And they had their patrol rifles with them. They functioned just like you would hope. And, but moving forward, we want to make sure they always have the best equipped, equipment possible. And upgrading our rifles to a newer model would lessen the, the possibility of having any kind of malfunction or breakdown of, of the weapon system. Again, that's 100,000 of the, the request. Our ammunition restocking is 125,000 of the 296,300. And that would be both pistol and rifle rounds, nine millimeter, 308 and 223 rounds. We have to have those, that ammunition to, to function as a law enforcement agency. Protective shields is $58,000 of that. And this would be not only for SWAT, but also patrol. Again, that incident the other night is a great example of when you, when you need a, a shield, that would be one of them to have handy when you're out on patrol. We all, we are looking at possibly going after some grants for these type things. But that's not a, a given that we'll get that. The other is breathing gas masks for the SWAT. That's 13,300 of the, of the total amount. I think last year, one thing that I noticed, SWAT, we use a lot. And there's a reason we use them a lot. It's because they're well-trained. They're, we want to, we want to minimize injury to not only the, the person that we're going after, but also our officers. And that's why we use SWAT. They're trained in, trying to de-escalate the situation. But when it comes to, to making entry, they're the best that, that we have. And I think that's a testament to why we need to equip them the best and train them the best continually. Training is very, very key to keeping, keeping our officers alert and, and up to date on, on new tactics. And it also helps in the area of litigation and lawsuits that we have proper training. And line three forty five uniforms from 85,000 to 153,000. This is a $68,000 increase. We have 32,000 of this. 68,000 is for expiring vests. And West Virginia code, I think requires funding those vests for our officers. So that's 32,000 of the 68,000. those vests for our officers. So that's 32,000 of the 68,000. All weather gear again for our SWAT team, is 26,000 of that. SWAT didn't, just doesn't come out in nice weather. They come out in all kinds of weather and, and that's something that we see a, a real need for there. And estimate on new hires, the wear and tear, cost of goods, boot allowances and adjustments, labor for uniform alterations, and shipping increases 10,000 of that 68,000. Cost of everything's gone up, so that's, that's part of the additional ask there. And it looks like all other lines for 700 law enforcement is sufficient to meet our department needs. Any questions you have, I'd be glad to try to answer them. If not, I have some people here that probably could.
I don't have any questions. I thought you did a very good job of explaining your needs. We want your people to be the best trained. We want your people to be the best equipped. You know, those, those things are important. But it's a heavy ask, as you mentioned right from the start. Must be open and honest. But the value is, I promise you that we will do what we can do. And there are, there are priorities. And I hopefully, we'd like to be able to talk to you about some of your priorities so we can meet those priorities and hopefully get you where you need to be. That's all I have unless somebody else has any other.
I just thought it was a very detailed presentation and I like how you went into your expenditures and you showed exactly how those expenditures were, were breaking down. And, you know, I reiterate what the president says, we want to make sure that you guys are the best equipped and well-trained and you have the, the staff that you need and, and we want to provide you with everything that we possibly can. But we do understand, you know, we have limited resources and, and it is a pretty large lift, but we, we definitely appreciate you and, and care about all of your people. So just so that everyone knows that, we want you to be in the best shape that you can possibly be in to protect our constituents.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, sir.
Again, I, I, I want to thank you all and, and all the support you've given us. And I, I really look forward to working with you all in the, the future. Anything related to Berkeley County, just making it better.
You've got a, you've got a great department and they do a lot of work out here. We know that. And with, with the resources on the state level declining as they have, we know that workload goes to you all. We understand that.
Yes, sir. I appreciate your time today.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Good chief.
Chiefs? You guys, thank you.
Next up is Randy Lilly, Emergency Services Director, along with Martin Roberts, Fire Chief. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Almost said morning. I'm used to. First of all, I want to thank all of you, all of you all for your continued support, dedication to public safety and to our community members within the county. In our request this year, asking for an increase in a couple line items. For our travel, we're asking for the $2,000, same as what we have at last year. For maintenance and repair on equipment, $18,000, same as last year. And if some of you remember, about half of that is for the upgrade for the library on our hazmat ID and our ACE ID meter. Some of that sophisticated equipment, very expensive. If we don't keep up with the libraries, it doesn't help us much. So about half of that is for those two pieces of equipment. Advertising and publications, we're asking for $500 there, the same as last year. Training and education, we're asking a $1,500 increase from 7,000 to 9,500, and that's due to the increase of firefighters that we're adding to our, our existing team. So basically just did the math, so much per firefighter and increased it by the number of firefighters. Dues and subscriptions, asking for a $200 increase there. And again, that one is, is same regards. Those dues and subscriptions, and that is for the active 911 subscriptions to be able to supply the additional firefighters with that active 911. Supplies and materials, nope, I skipped one, didn't I? No, supplies and materials, asking for $9,000 there, the same as we had last year, no increase. Uniforms, we're asking for an, an increase there from, last year was 9,500 and this year asking for 13,000. And again, that is due to the increase of firefighters to our team. One thing we did do is we looked at our capital. And we're asking for a little bit less in capital this year. It's kind of a washout. We're a little bit less in capital, a little bit more in the expenditure budgets. Actually, it comes out to an exact wash last year at the end of the day for the total figure for our capital. We're still eating at some of these things that replacements for Swiftwater gear, hazmat stuff and things like that, that we're keeping up with, where we've been eating it, replacing some of this stuff just a little bit each year. So we're still doing that again this year. We're asking for $5,000 for a, a radiological meter. Chief Roberts did have one instance where that small meter would have come in handy over in Jefferson County a couple of months ago. We've got some turnout gear, two, actually two sets of turnout gear this year that come up for replacement. That's about $4,500 per set. So that's $9,000 in gear. Actually, this year we're getting, is a pretty lucky year with only two to be replacement, needed to be replaced. We're asking for an additional 13, the thermal infrared cameras, the individual cameras that we, we was approved last year for the firefighters. And this is for the addition of, of more firefighters coming on. And they're $1,100 each, so that's a price tag of about 14,300. On the emergency management, well, I'll go back, keep going with the Swiftwater helmets. We're asking for 12 more helmets. They're $100 apiece. That's total 1,200. Swiftwater boots, 12 more pair for $100 a pair. They're, that's 1,200. Some carabiners, 30, $50 apiece. We're asking for 34 of those at 1,700. And the rope and pulley system for $5,000 for the Swiftwater boat. And another $800 were, were pagers for the new firefighters. We did some things with some pagers and I think we're down to where we only need three more and they're only $800 apiece. So the total for that would be 2,400. And on the emergency management side, we're doing more and more events and things like that where we're getting our face out into public, promoting public safety and things like that. Different safety events and things. When we do that, we put our equipment in the back of our vehicle and we haul it over, some of it, and then we come back and we get more and we haul it over. Then we come back and we get, it takes us three or four trips to haul our tables and chairs and, and different things that we take, take to these events. So we're asking for, and to, for an enclosed trailer, $6,000 for an enclosed trailer to be able to store this stuff in. We can just hook to the trailer, take it to the vent, unload everything that we need. We also have with, for the fire events as well, we can have enough room to put everything in there, take it over and be able to utilize that. That would be my least thing that I, I feel that is not a need, that's more of a want. We can, we've been doing without that and we can still do without it. All the other stuff in capital for the, supporting the fire side of things, some things that... But the total capital, $45,800 for all of those, for all those capital. Last year, I think we were at 52,000 for capital. We reduced the, the capital outlay. So it's kind of a wash when you do our capital and our expense budget together. Any questions on any of that?
I don't know if that's be on our side of the budget, but the cancer testing that we started last year, we'd like to be able to, our side, so we'll budget for that. I don't have any questions, Randy.
Chief, if you've got anything to add?
Who else have anything?
Again, thank you all very much for your support.
Very self-explanatory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, we have a, an appointed, appointment change. We're going to start at 3, so I think we need to wait for you until afterwards. But I don't think you can do yours in five minutes. Right. Thank you. Yeah, we'll go take a break for a couple minutes. Okay, we're back in session and next up is Larry Hess, our assessor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have, I think, Mr. Patel is here. We have a three o'clock for they have, I think he's representing three motels on Foxcroft. John is give his side of the appraisals. We usually let the taxpayer come first, if you want to do it that way. And then we could, he can present his information. Then John can give you his side of it. I think we're all here ready to go if you're.
Okay. Anthony, if you would, John and Mr. Patel, I'd like to get you sworn in, your testimony. Thank you. Mr. Patel, the floor is yours, sir.
I mean, there are three separate.
Yes, sir.
They're all similar and our argument is similar.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the time you took out today to look at this case. So I'll start with 301 Foxcroft Avenue, Golden Hotels LLC. So the property is being valued at $11,463,900 for this current 2025 tax year. My client, who I represent, his opinion of value based on the cost approach and the income approaches that I've provided would be $8,500,000. If you turn to the, the third page of 18, are, does everyone have that same packet that I'm looking at?
Probably. So what's, what's it look like there? Because our pages aren't numbered.
I was on digital, so if you could show us. Yeah, we have that.
Okay, yeah, we got it.
So three of 18 would be, so first I reached out with John to discuss these. Usually typically when we look at hotel accounts, we try to base their valuation on the income. But John had mentioned there's not that many sales in the county at the moment. So it's hard for him to derive a cap rate to do that income approach. That's why they've been basing all their evaluations on cost approach. So once he let me know that, I did a cost approach on my end as well, based on the property card that was provided. I've used Marshall and Swift. I don't know if you guys are aware of what Marshall and Swift is or not. You are? Okay. So I've used an updated one from November, December 2024 is the latest one that I have. I've done the cost evaluation. When it comes towards to the land of the property, we're not in disagreement there. The land is at the same value. Where we're coming into a disagreement is the improvement on the main structure. So I've done the, the line item where it says building one. You can see the base rate $177, which you can see with the Marshall and Swift page that I provided on page six of 18. There's a depreciation of there of on 70%, which also is included with the depreciation table that Marshall and Swift uses on page eight. I think the only discrepancy that I see between mine and the cost approach, everything else is the same, is the local multiplier that the assessor is using. He's using, I believe, 2.72 based on the Marshall and Swift table that I have from December 2024. Oh, sorry, January 2025 is the latest one I have. In West Virginia, you can see on page nine, the multiplier for a class B property, which the property assessor has assessed this as would be 1.03, which the county is using a 2.72. In my opinion, that's pretty high. I've also done some accounts in some other counties, just to mention in West Virginia, Upsher, Harrison, Nicholas, where their county multipliers are around like 1.5, 1.6, 1.8. I just don't know why this property is being applied at 2.72 multiplier. Like, what is driving up that number to make that cost modifier so high? That number is usually the number to adjust for the year of the property to what it is right now, the cost based on like the market and everything like that. If you look at Marshall and Swift, which is a reputable source in the nation that everyone uses assessors, appraisers alike, they're showing only a 1.03. So that's only the difference I see here is that multiplier is just too high. I don't know where that number is coming from. From what I spoke with John, he said it's based on the commercial survey that they did. But what, what in that commercial survey is boosting that number to 2.72? It's really high. And when you apply that to the value, of course, it's going to drive it up to the $11,463,000 that's being shown versus when I use the multipliers and everything from Marshall and Swift. I'm coming out to an improvement value of $6,344,351. The land is $1,824, which is, I believe, almost the exact same as what the county has. So there's no argument there. Same as the extra features are around the same. It's just the main improvement that we need to have a discussion on. If you flip to the next couple of pages, I've just highlighted the numbers that I use from the Marshall and Swift. You go to page. If you go to page 10, I know the assessor doesn't have a cap rate to do an income analysis, but we have some data on our end nationwide. So I used the cap rate from there and did an income approach based on the STR report, which has the revenue for the competitive properties in the area. If you take a look at page 10, you'll see that the revenue actually has decreased 5.6% from last year. I've also added, as it comes to hotels, when someone's purchasing it, we're not just looking at land and building. There's also an intangible business brand value to that property, which I've done a deduction for that, 9.43%. I've used the 72% expense based on the STAR report that I have also attached to this. For that scale of property should be on page. Page 13 of 18, you'll see for this class, which is an upper mid-scale, there's a 72.6% expense. And then I've also used the 8% cap rate, which I have a chart of on. Page 18, the very last page. So yeah, there isn't that many cells in your region because most of the hotels here are newly built. So I've just used whatever's the closest to this area. So I use the 8% and I'm coming out to a value of $8,820,000, which is fairly close to the $8,500,000 that I've got on the cost approach. So doing these two different approaches, the income and the cost, I'm coming out to a value of around 8.5. And once again, assessor doesn't want to consider an income because there isn't sales in the area. Last sale I found was like a week ago. I think it was in Shepherdstown, I believe is the closest to here. It was around a 10% cap rate based on the current listing. But I've only used the eight here. I just wanted to do the income approaches to show another side to the getting to the value. I know the assessor can't consider it because there isn't active sales to get a cap rate. So I was just including that to show comparison to that in the cost of them. So I mean, I believe that's it for the first one. Just want to take, see if there's any consideration on that local multiplier because that's the only discrepancy.
Okay, so with you using Marshall Swift, that's a, that's a nationwide appraisal tool.
But they, they boil down to the region and then the local area as well. And you could see that on that table that I provided.
But you're using a different type of approach than what the assessor uses.
So I use, I use the same approach he did, the cost approach, and I did the income approach both. He, he didn't want to consider the income because he can't derive act, active cap rate in this area because there isn't.
Do you feel like that's an apples to apples comparison?
For what? Costs and sales? I mean, costs and, I mean.
Your secondary approach that he does not consider because of not enough sales.
I mean, I think when it comes to hotels, that is the best way to value a hotel property. Because when a, based on income, because when a buyer buys a hotel, they're looking at the income. They're not looking at what it takes to build it. The brand, they're also looking at the brand. There's intangible value to that.
But we don't tax, but we don't tax our real estate based on.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, so we have to base it on.
Cost.
Yes.
Yeah, which I provided a cost as well, but there's only just a discrepancy on the cost multiplier.
Yes, sir. Understand. Thank you.
And there's been no refinancing of any of these properties over the last year?
Not that I know of, not that the client is.
Nothing in Berkeley County that you're aware of, to be able to use as a comparable?
No. Any other questions?
I don't have anything. Mr. Callahan or Mr. Boyd, you have anything?
Difference between last year and this year is what? What I see is.
Yeah, the difference in value from last year and this year is it's not that much, but it just might be the local multiplier that's being used.
I think modifiers would increase it a little bit.
Well, I mean, I have the Marshall and Swift. I mean, people, this is what people use around the states. I mean, he has his commercial survey, but I want to know what's in that commercial survey that's making this area very high out of 2.72. What are the factors going into that? Why is it so off? Also, the other three counties I mentioned were way lower. They're at like a 1.5, 1.6, 1.8 was the highest I saw.
Yeah, I would also suggest to that, Mr. Patel, that typically anything west of here is not going to carry near the value. If we were going to look, we would either look right where we are or we would look eastward, not westward.
Virginia, right?
Virginia and Maryland.
So on that same page, there's also multipliers for Virginia as well. So those are actually lower than the 2.72.
Thank you.
If you want to take a look at that. Any other questions on this property?
I don't have anything. John, are you ready?
You want me to present the other two? Because they're, they're basically similar.
I think we should do them all.
The, the only adjustment that I want to make is that local multiplier. Because it's being applied on all of the 2.72.
Okay.
And my income approach and the cost approach are coming at around the same value. Yes, back in 20. Yeah. Well, I mean, if we're talking about sales approach, there's no argument on the assessment. I always thought that that sales wasn't, wasn't on factor possibly. So the depreciation, there'll be a depreciation based on the value. There'll be a local or a county multiplier. Adjust for that cost based on. No, the depreciation worked on, when I did my depreciation. No, no, so they'll do the same thing. They'll do the sales, the cost per square foot times the square footage, and no via depreciation on it.
Thank you.
Didn't have time to put this all together electronically and submit it before the hearing. So I had to print it out.
It's still warm.
Yeah, it's hot off the presses.
Thanks.
I need a cool copy.
Property in question is District Mountain Parcel 068, Parcel 57, 4.29 acre survey plowed Winchester Hospitality LLC. Assessed for the 2025 tax year by the assessor's office is $6,878,340. Now legislative rule 110-1P was considered and utilized for the 2025 tax year. This rule illuminates a number of elements that shall be considered when during a commercial appraisal. The majority of those elements are located within IAS on the property record card. However, some of the elements are found on the tax map while others are found on the certificate of transfer and sales listing form received from the county clerk. Zoning information is found on a map supplied by the city of Martinsburg and is also deemed to be permitted based upon the building permits which are issued by the city of Martinsburg. There are no zoning regulations of Berkeley County. Starting to work for the new tax year in addition to review and maintenance work, the first item to be completed is that commercial cost study. This is required to be completed every year by the West Virginia State Tax Department. We typically obtain the cost of new. We typically obtain the cost of new construction from either the contractor or the property owner. But in some cases, if neither party is cooperative, we have obtained information from the city of Martinsburg. Berkeley County leased, last I checked, I may have to update this, but does not require exact building costs. Owner permits to Berkeley County cost study for 2025 tax year yielded a modifier of two point seven two. Being as that we've been talking about it, I'm going to go back and refer to that which you do have in your packet of information. And on that summary of test appraisals, there are. You have two pages.
Third page, number seven?
You have to forgive me because my secretary.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is what I'm referring to.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, there were sixteen samples and basically any new project that comes in, any new building, I send out a cost sheet to, I try to do with the contractors. Sometimes I can't get the contractors and I go back to the owners. Contractors usually a better source of information. But on, on the cost studies, the cost information that I was getting back, costs have risen in the last five years, and I have outlined this and I'll get to that too. Costs in this county have risen dramatically. Now, in this particular sample, I could get sixteen samples that I could use. Now, every sample that I get, I can't use it because sometimes it's either the sample show way low or it's way high. Now, on this front page, you'll see there is a coefficient of dispersion, which is almost at the very bottom. And this says here the coefficient is eight point six for these samples that I have. What that tells me is, is how far away from the median am I? Anything under fifteen, I'm good at. All right, I'm acceptable to the state of West Virginia. If I go too high, I'm out of compliance, it's not an accepted rate to use. So being as that we are at eight point six, it shows me that the samples that I have, and these are my samples, you'll see the District Mountain Parcel, the year that it was put into service, year that the project was completed, the actual cost that was given to us by either the owner or the contractor. And then that base schedule is a cost that our system initially values it at. Now, I'm not an expert in, in the state of West Virginia system and, but what I was told years and years ago was that the cost loaded into the table, to the computers that we use, which all fifty-five counties use, is nineteen eighty-three Marshall Swift. Now, can I verify that? No, I really can't, I'm just, that's what we were told. So each county has to do their own modifier study. And you will see discrepancies between, well, Nicholas County and Boone County and Canaveral County and Jefferson County, you're going to see differences. And it's going to be based upon whatever study that they have on new construction. Some counties, the new construction for commercialize is minimal. They, some counties can't even actually do a study because they just don't have any, and they have to go to other surrounding counties hopefully to get something that they can use. And that does happen in some places in the state. But here in Berkeley County in the last couple of years, fortunate enough that we have enough new projects going on that I could get samples. And so you see all the samples that actually made it into the study. And taking that into account, the modifier this year from the, from the values that are on the system, our modifier is two point seven two. And that is applied to all commercial buildings that are appraised on commercial card in the county.
What was it last year, John? The modifier that you know?
Yes, I do. Matter of fact, in 2020, the modify was two point oh eight. Twenty-one, it was two point one seven. Twenty-two, it was two point three seven.
Thirty-seven.
Twenty-three, it was two point five five. And twenty-four, it was two point six three. So it's been a steady rise over the last four or five years.
In terms of pass increases, it really hasn't increased that much, it pretty much averaged all through those five or six years.
Pretty much as, yes, pretty much as it is.
And John, you take those sixteen factors and you take those, add those up and divide by sixteen, is that how you come up?
Basically, that's how you do it.
Okay.
Yes. All right. And like we said, those sixteen samples that are there are not all the samples that I got back. They're just the ones that I could put together in a common sense list so that my coefficient of dispersion was not so far out. I had a lot of samples that were showing me samples of five, six, seven factor, which is huge, I mean, that's a huge increase.
Then that puts you out of compliance for this, that puts you out of compliance from the legislature.
My coefficient was so far out that I couldn't be using. As a matter of fact, I had to call Jefferson County up and I said, hey, man, y'all got anything down there? Because we can call neighboring counties if need be. If, if we can share information, they do encourage us to do that. So I had called a guy down Jefferson County and he gave me three samples. And because he gave me those three samples, I was able to use that as a commercial modifier. Other than that, it was going to be very difficult for me to get a sample that was well within my range for coefficient to be underneath fifteen. Very difficult. And that's just due to the rising cost of everything that's going on out in the marketplace. So that is how we came to the modifier two point seven two. Once the cost study is completed, we use, we use sales to do a land study. If the property has improvements, we do a land residual technique. We back out the improvement value and the remaining amount should be attributable to the land. Now, the one-year land study, which I've given you a copy as exhibit three, did not indicate a change in value for location four, where the subject property that we're talking about is located. Now, I don't have a lot of different commercial neighborhoods, but inside of each neighborhood, I have different locations. What drives commercial property, location, 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 so I have different locations. All three of these hotels that, that are going to be discussed here today are all in the same location. So in a one-year study, I did not have enough sales in a location before they tell me to change land or anything else. So when I don't have enough sales, I can go backwards three years. So I also went back three years. And as you can see, for location three, which is not where they are, there was a change in, based on sales or change in land values in location three. But for location four, I did not change land values from last year, so that's state study. The assessor's office receives a final ratio report evaluation from the West Virginia State Tax Department after each tax year's work is completed. The report was actually, you see today, I got a copy of it, so the commercial section passed its monitoring and you have that listed as exhibit five. Now, the three approaches to value that we have to consider are the cost, the income and the market approach. Now, the, the cost approach was considered for the 2025 tax year in that the physical deterioration, functional obsolescence and external obsolescence were taken into consideration. Based upon the definition of functional obsolescence and economic obsolescence, our office did not believe that any adjustments were needed other than the normal depreciation on the improvements. The sales approach was considered, but there were no sales for a franchise hotel, which is, for us, is a land use code of three fourteen. So on the system, when you search for sales, any land use code that's sold will come up, but there was no three fourteens listed that came up when I sent out the income and expense information that I sent out to the properties that did sell. So there was no three fourteen sales this year for the twenty-five tax year. Now, the income approach was also considered and letters were mailed out to all valid commercial sales. But as I stated previously, there was not a valid sale for a three fourteen land use code, which if you don't have, according to the legislative rule, if you don't have a valid sale, then you don't have the income approach, the income from that sale, the income and expense information, then you can't do a cap rate. We can't use the income to do it, then anybody that come forth can't be using an income approach also. We have to keep it on the same level of playing field. Okay, as, as I've already stated, the income approach was looked at, but it couldn't be used. The market, the sales approach was looked at, it could not be used. So we use the cost approach to value this property for the 2025 tax year. And we do believe based on all the factors that go into the studies and to economic and physical and functional depreciation that this is O Six Eight Fifty Sism is in fact equalized with the other chain hotels based on the factors such as age, type of construction, design of project, amenities and so forth. The last sale recorded, which is already, Anthony had already brought up for the Holiday Inn, was in October of two thousand eighteen and it was for ten million, five hundred thousand dollars. The Fairfield Inn, which is O Six Eight Fifty Eight One, last sold on August in twenty twenty-two for a consideration of thirteen million, six hundred and fifty thousand. I have the D there with you so that you can see that it was. Of these hotels that we're talking about in Berkeley County, Hilton Garden Inn, built in two thousand sixteen, is a hundred and ten bed hotel. The Fairfield Inn, also built in two thousand sixteen, is a ninety-two bed hotel. Home Two Suites by Hilton is a hundred and fifteen bed hotel, opened in twenty twenty. A True by Hilton opened a hundred and fourteen bed hotel in twenty twenty-four. That had a permitted value from Martinsburg premise for thirteen million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and eight. A copy of that permit is there with your packet. It just seems that investors have seen fit to invest in these types of projects in Berkeley County in the last eight years. And in fact, the last two projects were within the last four years. And if they're seeing fit to invest that type of money in Berkeley County, I think it speaks a lot about the hotel industry here in the county and what's expected when, when, cost wise, what, what cost is. And then we discussed the county commercial modifier, which since two thousand and twenty was two point oh eight and this year was two point seven two based on the study that I showed you. So in summary, the Berkeley County Assessor's Office has properly filled out the property record card for this property. This office has performed the required studies that determines land and building prices. We have considered all three approaches to valuing and considered the physical, functional, economic depreciation on this property. So in summary, we feel that the value that we have on it, the assessment that we have on it, it's fair and equal for everybody else. That's, that's how we find it.
Do I have any questions for John? Sure, yeah, just a minute. Just a second, anybody else have anything for John? Yeah, Mr. Patel, come on up, please.
Nothing too much, just going back to, well, the sales price that he mentioned right now, the recent ones for all these properties? Those sales aren't just the real estate itself, it's the, the land, the building and the flag that's on that property. So say a Holiday Inn, if I take that flag off, it's sold for ten million. But if it's just the building, it's not going to be sold at ten million. There's a value when it comes to that flag. That's why it's being sold at ten million here. So if he wants to assess it at cost approach, then that shouldn't be compared because cost is just land and building. Doesn't take in the factor of what's on that, what business is in that. So I'm just, he mentioned the sales, but I don't think those numbers should correlate with this cost. Because there is an intangible value of the flag that's on the boost of that. Another thing is the multiplier, I believe he mentioned they're using Marshall and Swift too, but it's outdated one from the nineties or something. And then from there, they've been adjusting the modifier throughout the years. Go up in twenty twenty at two point oh eight, seventeen to thirty-seven versus what I provided as a Marshall and Swift from this year, January twenty twenty-five, the multipliers that are on there. So that's the only other rebuttal I have. I hope you can look into that and take some consideration into that.
I have a question for you, Mr. Patel. How long you been with the company?
For two years.
But you didn't complain about the assessment last year?
Well, this is a new client, this client came to us two weeks ago.
Okay, it's the worst time you've dealt with this client is what you're saying?
Uh huh, yeah, this is the first time we have appealed. So we're based in Houston, we do national property tax appeal. So this client came to us two weeks ago wanting to protest.
So you're an outside contractor in a sense?
Yeah. Property tax consultant, licensed in Texas.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. John, the modifier last year, last tax year was two point six three. And there was no, we didn't go through this process last year with these owner groups?
No, we did not.
Went up point oh eight and it went up point oh nine the year before that and then the year before that it went up point one nine. And then the year before that, point two oh, so.
It steadily climbed.
You know, this, this one is half of what it was two years ago, the modifier. So I, let's see how we can adjust it in my mind, but. Do you need a motion? Are you ready for that? What, Anthony, you got something else?
And additionally, if you're not adjusting an assessment, a few times when he comes in, do a written order of motion. Sign the written order. These can be appealed then, it used to be to the, the circuit court, but now it's all to the Office of Tax Appeals. There's this.
Does he, does he know that?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
You're aware of that?
Yeah, one more, one more level of appeal?
So you can make a motion now or you can wait until we have that. Either way, either way it works. I believe he only presented the evidence on the one, so you can make a motion on that one and.
Arguments is same.
We have three separate motions or three separate written motions and then we would act on those three separate written motions once we adopted them.
Right. It's perfectly fine for you to do that now, there will be a follow-up order. Gives the reasoning so that he can.
Yeah, I, I think we need to wait on that written, on the order, on the order itself.
I do have one question. I wouldn't argue much, Patel, about the sales price and the flag bearing on, on any property like that because it probably is a cost that that carries in with that sale price. But that new project that was just put in this year, opened by Old Mossa, I'm gonna say thirteen point three million, it's a brand new project. I'm just finding it hard to believe in any project in this county of that size, it's coming in much less.
Well, it, it's actually, one of my notes on here was that particular property that I don't even believe it has a convention.
I say it has, why is that, and then you compare it with the.
Not, not to like to say the holiday.
Yeah, but it is a new property compared to one that's nearly thirty years old. Okay, I, I think that we need to wait on the written order.
And we'll have three individual written orders?
Yes. And the, if you're looking at, I don't know if John spoke about it, but like the Holiday Inn, if I agree on that depreciate, cost approach. A percent good. This AI.
Okay, Mr. Patel, other than the multiplier that's being used, is there anything else that you would like to present about the other two properties?
Well, I mean, I can go over the same stuff, but there's nothing else separate.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, but this is your time to.
Yeah, that, that's the only argument.
Very good, okay.
Because the income of purchase. But I just still did one on.
I just want to clarify with you too, in West Virginia, you only pay on sixty percent of that value, not the full value.
I'm, I'm arguing with the.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
John, do you have anything else to add?
About this in particular, no, sir. I don't know how that you want to speak on the other two.
Well, Mr. Patel, he says his only complaint is the multiplier.
And my basic response would be the same.
Yeah, right.
Depending on the modifier that the study that I have shows that with. I equally across every property that hurts it. I'm all right.
Very good. Okay. That should end our appeal process here then, all right? Thank you. Thank both of you.
From what I have, it'll be determined later.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Larry, you don't have anybody else, right? Okay, we're gonna take a break then until 4 o'clock, unless somebody else comes in.
Well, Brian, we gotta do Brian.
Yeah.
We're gonna do him and.
We're back in session, and next up is Brian Ross, with his budget presentation. Good afternoon, Brian.
Good afternoon. I have three departments that I'm gonna go over. I'll give some details on justification for the changes or request. And then at the end, I would like to get an overview of where my department is and where we're looking to move. So first, we're gonna start with Account 438, which is building inspections. On the line item for travel, I asked for an increase from $3,400 to $4,000. Training and education from $3,000 to $3,500. Dues and subscriptions stayed the same. Refunding erroneous payments stayed the same. And departmental supplies and materials, I asked from $2,500 to $3,500. Now, justification for that is we recently hired a new residential building inspector, Mr. Becker. With that being said, once he is through his provisional status, but before he takes his test, we need to supply him books, material, and everything based off of our building code ordinance in order for him to study and pass these exams. So that is part of the justification for that. And then once a staff member acquires certifications, that constitutes continuing education, which, as we all know, is trips to Flatwoods, some things we do online, some things we may travel locally, that if they're offering what's called ICC credits for continuing education that we have to keep up with in order for our renewals to keep our certifications current. And with that being said, as we move forward, I have current staff taking more testing. So in order for that, that also continues even more education and training to keep up with those certifications for that. In my Account 438 request, I put in a personal request form for a residential plans examiner. As we know, John Dick retired the end of November. And in return, we had to readjust current staff levels and ask other staff to take on more added duties, which I've met with county administration, and we have some stuff in the works and currently being worked on that we're gonna get closure on. One was Steve Abreg, taking on the responsibility of the building code official, in which he was able to acquire and pass his testing for that. I also had an inspector, Debbie Watt, who passed her commercial building inspector. And so that way, Debbie can do residential and commercial simultaneously along with my new residential inspector in Brian Eaton. So I basically have three residential inspectors and one that can do commercial. So that way, based on my workflow of what gets assigned for the following day, we can split them up and make sure the work is getting done properly. With that being said, I currently have two residential plan reviewers, which is Steve and Crystal. Steve is also doing the code official along with doing residential plan review. I also have a new hire previously, Dan Tracy, who is currently doing commercial plan reviews in which John handled earlier. In between that, he is also helping out with small residential projects, decks, additions, garages, small additions and that, so that we can keep everything flowing. So with the residential plans examiner, if it is granted, that will give me, for lack of a better term, a backup plan with current staff due to vacations, illness, what have you, no matter what it would be. And that was my mindset for requesting that position. On, we'll move on. Any questions on 438? I'm sorry. Account 440 is engineering. And this is the one that I didn't ask for much change on. If we go down through my contractual services, you will see the travel stayed the same, advertising and legal publication's the same, training and education stayed the same. I asked for a little bit more. And that's because Steve Abreg acquired two more certifications for the code official position. So in turn, he has to add more to CEUs to keep his certifications current. Dues and subscriptions stayed the same, professional services stayed the same, and so did departmental materials and supplies. Now, based off of where we're at in the current fiscal year, might as well say we're almost three-quarters of the way through it. And I am doing very well with current numbers to where I'm not even achieving at a 50% three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year, which is good, which in turn says that, you know, we're managing our money properly. But in return, we also need to, I need to supply more stuff moving forward with new staff and changes that are coming forward. Excuse me. Any questions on that? Okay. Last one is Account 439, planning and zoning. This here, we are well under our contractual services budget for the current fiscal year. And if we go down through these line items real quick, you can see between advertising and legal, training and education, dues and subscriptions, court costs and damages, refunding erroneous payments, departmental supplies and materials, it stayed the same. We're well under budget. A compliment to the IT department in a lot of these contractual services is a lot of this stuff is handled through IT. One, we went through a totally paperless system. A lot of the stuff, we're able to access online and through the IT department, get advancements and upgrades to where we don't have to get the material possessions that we did in the past. Other than from like the inspections department, I do need my code books. We need to be able to reference them out in the field. We need to be able to show people, this is why I'm enforcing what I'm enforcing. With that being said, I've talked with the administration, and we have a game plan currently of the way things are functioning and functioning properly. With Steve being our code official, Debbie was taking on the added commercial so that we could get Sean Becker out in the field. Once we get Sean Becker out on his own, I'll be able to bounce that inspector between residential and commercial while the other two do strictly residential. My commercial plan reviewer has the hopes of possibly studying for his commercial inspector for a backup plan in case Debbie or Steve or somebody's not able to do it. The whole mindset behind this with all three budgets is for me to have a backup plan for everything that's going on. And in order to do that, we had to make some changes. I've met briefly with county administrators and have a game plan together, and hopefully, we will be able to present that to you. I would love to do it next week if the county administration and us come to an agreement and get it taken care of.
So Steve Abreg, he's not qualified to do commercial plan review?
Yes, he can, but he's busy, he's currently doing residential. Because I only have one, I have Steve and Crystal doing residential plan review right now. But Steve's also taking on the code official. Steve's been out doing commercial inspections. Steve's been doing a little bit of everything, is what he's been doing. Everybody's been stepping up.
I missed the part that he was doing the residential stuff, too.
Yes, sir, he's doing residential plan reviews also. He's.
Sounds like you have a very motivated staff.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
There's no dust, there's no dust on their desk.
Yeah.
And I've said this before, you know, I'm in the industry and I hear good things about the permit office and engineering, and people are happy with the way things are moving. And I work with you guys on the planning commission, and everyone's happy with the way things are moving, and you have a motivated staff, but.
And Laura has even stepped up and took on much added responsibility in her position, too, and.
Well, with a motivated staff, you have to make sure that we're keeping them motivated.
Correct. And hopefully, we'll be able to present something to the commission. I would like to do it next week, if all possible, on the internal changes that need to happen and be taken care of.
Wonder which, you're gonna take over the bond thing.
So the plan.
Yeah. We're working on it. Sarah's helping out a little bit with it. We need to learn a little bit more about it.
I do always like the administrative, and L sheet really, probably administrative work, but I would.
That's for the bond releases?
As built, that's something that I'm not familiar with, but. Hands all day.
Mm-hmm, right. Endgame.
And we can always reach out to the other constituents of the county that supply us information that would spend the time with us to say, this is the way I see it, and then we can form our own opinion on how we see it to form a conclusion to move it forward.
Been here over two years now, and I've never had to complain about that. I've been here, so I heard you compliment.
That's a compliment to everybody outside this door.
Yeah, because it always hasn't been that way. But what's the turnaround now? If somebody goes online, on Lama, and applies for a building permit for a home, what's the turnaround typically, ballpark?
Residential single-family home right now, or townhouse or duplex, is approximately around three weeks. When, we've come a long way with that, but we also have to understand that we're at the mercy of the applicant. Take, for instance, the week of, the week of February 4th, whatever it was, I got 37 single-family homes in one week. The following week, a quarter of that. So it bounces, but we try to keep that two- to three-week window for initial plan reviews. Now, keep in mind, an initial plan review doesn't automatically mean a permit.
I understand.
So, because we have goods submittals and we have ones that are, need a lot of work.
That's what I was gonna say, it depends on the level of the plans that you get.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else got anything for Brian?
No, sir.
Anybody got anything hard for Laura? Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You guys are, you do great work, and we appreciate you very much. And, you know, I've said it before, and I'll say it again today, you know, Doug's knowledge and ability in the engineering is extreme. You know, I sit down with you all, when you sit down with CMC Steel, thinking I was gonna be able to help you, help them. You didn't need my help at all because you took very good care of them as well, I know you do, everybody else that comes through there. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay on your presentation.
That's okay.
We are within the minutes.
You are, sir.
That's timing. That's pretty good. We are on the hour.
Okay. Let's the record show there is nobody from the public here, and I need a motion.
Mr. President, I motion that we adjourn Sonny Di from the Board of Revision and Equalization.
We are adjourned.